I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the regular board meeting of April 9th. It's now 7:01. There's a quorum present. Tracy Long has taken the role, so we need to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first item of business is to review, revise, or approve and approve the agenda. Are there any changes? Seeing none, I would like to request a motion to approve the agenda as written. Trustee Wake and seconded by trustee Afgharaz. Are there any public comments on the agenda itself? Seeing none, let's vote to approve the agenda. All present voted affirmatively. We'd also like to now approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' regular meeting on March 26th. Are there anyone can make a motion? Trustee Wake and trustee Afgharaz, second. Any public comments on the minutes? Seeing none, will all the trustees raise their hands if they approve the minutes? All trustees present have approved the minutes. We're now to the public comment and correspondence piece of the meeting. The public comments should be regarding non-agenda items with three minutes per speaker. I need to remind everyone, the public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for us to respond or for the public to ask questions. We have to ask you not to infringe on the right of privacy of others. When you get up to speak, please sign in and spell your first and last name. We limit the comments to three minutes per speaker, and the chair may interrupt or terminate a speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes or personally directed to an individual. Any public comments?
We do have public comment tonight. Please remember to say and spell your name for us.
Oh, okay. That's loud. I'm a sixth grader at Washington Middle School, and I qualified in Nationals for Business Professionals of America. I'd like to say that I owe a great thanks to Ms. Elam and Ms. Dernberger for helping me accomplish these things and many other students. And I hope that a lot of other students in the future may be guided by their guiding hand and have as much of a pledge -- big word -- as fun as I did. And I'd also like to talk a little bit about art. I'd like to say that some of my most fond elementary memories were in the art room with my fellow students laughing and joking. I believe the room itself is very essential to this, is inviting and colorful, and is a safe haven. I don't know if I said that wrong or not. Both my sisters are dyslexic, and many other core curriculum classes have right and wrong answers, but I love art because it is very expressive and there's not a lot of ways to mess it up. It's very fun and inclusive, and it cultivates friendship and brings students together. If you're still not persuaded by my irresistible charm, I wrote -- I have wrote a letter here, which I'll give to one of you. Oh, okay.
Can I submit it through public comment?
What?
You can't hand something directly to the board.
Okay, I won't hand it to you.
You can email it to us.
I'll do that instead.
Email it to us.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's it.
Our next public commenter is Anne Wake.
I'd just like to extend the Missoula Education Foundation Board's thanks and my thanks for attending the Most Inspiring Student Awards last Thursday evening. If you weren't able to attend, we hope that you will attend this next year. And we had a lot of fun, and the parents were very remarkable with their comments about what was going on that night, so I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who would like to give a public comment tonight, whose name I have not yet called? Please come up to the microphone and say and spell your name for us.
I'll be brief, because I don't know if I can follow that very well. My name is Michael Rubleid, and I am just speaking once again in advocacy of the arts positions, including the Arts Education Director, that those be saved. Thank you.
Any other public comment? That is all.
Thank you very much. Oh. Thank you. We're now to item six on the agenda, the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report. Included in the packet are routine health insurance trust fund reports, including amended reports. There will be no oral reports. It's now time for the student trustee reports. We have student trustees from the individual high schools who will report on activities at their school. First, Big Sky High School.
Good evening, everybody. So, we have a handful of students that are trained to become certified nursing assistants, and throughout their experience, they've acquired a ton of essential skills in patient communication, privacy protection, vital signs assessment, and caring for individuals in critical states such as comas. Their training also encompasses the crucial aspect of patient hygiene and cleanliness. And these dedicated students will have committed significant hours in the hospital setting to gain hands-on experience, preparing them for their certificate examination. Nineteen of our health and public service ambassadors went to the Missoula Public Library to volunteer for Project Community Connect. This is an event designed to help provide assistance to the Missoula community members that don't have the same access to certain services. Our ambassadors have served in many ways, such as helping with food services and giving directions. They also recently had an opportunity to attend a fusion talk at the University of Montana, which starts off with a number of panelists, and then students are able to go into their own groups to discuss other things. This was a great opportunity for students who are interested in the science and health career path. And lastly, Big Sky hosted first-ever boxing tournament, and it was a hit. Teams from Canada, Spokane, and all over Montana came together for some matches, and it was organized by the District One Boxing Club, and the event saw a great turnout. It was amazing to see some of our own eagles stepping into the ring and giving it their all. There was a lot of effort that went into making this event a success, and it was a cool thing to see.
Hellgate High School.
Hello and good evening. Just last week, Hellgate's Goodnight Theater Company finished their production of Mean Girls, the Musical, and they sold out the auditorium from Wednesday through Saturday. We are exceptionally proud of what they accomplished this year and excited to see what they bring us next. Furthermore, last week, the Hellgate APS, or Advanced Problems in Science class, competed at the Montana Annual Science Fair, where Hellgate won overall for the 11th year in a row, and brought home many individual awards, such as the Regeneron Biomedical Science Award, first and second place from the U M College of Health, and many others. We are happy to say that we are sending a student to ISF, or the International Science and Engineering Fair, in Los Angeles this May. The research covered many topics ranging across all fields of science, and we know that all of the students worked incredibly hard on their projects, so this is a big win for Hellgate. Lastly, as the year is winding down, student government is planning an end-of-the-year celebration for all students, where we will hold our annual Powderpuff Football Tournament. As well as a new addition, the boys will be playing a volleyball competition on the same night. While this is a send-off for our seniors in some ways, it will be held at Playfair Park with the idea that the community will be welcomed. We hope that this can carry on and become yet another fun tradition at Hellgate. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that Seeley Swan High School is going to be online.
They've not been able to join us online as yet.
Perhaps we'll go on, at this moment, then, to Sentinel High School, and I believe Amy is going to read that one.
Yes, I'll be reading for Ryan Howell from Sentinel. Hello, I hope everyone is having a wonderful Tuesday evening. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend today's meeting, but that doesn't stop me from informing you all about Sentinel. Spring has sprung somewhat, and the school year is almost coming to an end. Despite the end of the school year being in our sights, Sentinel has not slowed down at all. There are many exciting events and activities coming up. The Sentinel Theater is proud to present The Thirty-Nine Steps, a play based on a film by Alfred Hitchcock. The play will be showing at 7:30 PM, April 11th, 12th, and 13th, in the Margaret Johnson Theater. There are over sixty students involved in roles, set design, tech, and costumes. Tickets are $8, and the proceeds will be used to further develop the Sentinel Theater program. Sentinel is gearing up for our yearly Respect Assembly on April 30th. At the assembly, the school recognizes our Spartan Special Olympics teams. Sentinel's varsity basketball seniors will play the Sentinel Special Olympics team in a fun, lighthearted basketball game in front of the school. The assembly will also feature games for the student body to participate in. There are two students gearing up to travel to Speech and Debate Nationals in Des Moines, Iowa. They will be traveling with the Big Sky team for five days of competition. Spring sports are in full swing. Sentinel offers softball, track and field, and tennis. Many students across Sentinel also play club sports, such as soccer, baseball, volleyball, rugby, and lacrosse. The Skills USA team earned three gold and two silver at their recent competition. Students were awarded gold in technical computer applications, technical drafting, and cybersecurity. Silver was awarded to urban search and rescue and criminal justice. And finally, on April 4th, eleven students from Sentinel competed at the Montana State Science Fair. Sentinel had three bronze ribbons, four silver ribbons, and four gold ribbons. One student won second place overall and will be traveling to West Virginia to compete in the International Science and Engineering Fair. Sentinel also won second place overall for Outstanding Large High School. Thank you.
Sorry, do we have Seeley Swan?
I'm afraid not.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item 6C, announcements from Superintendent Micah Hill.
Thank you. Good evening. So, quick announcements. We wrapped up a second round of going out to all of our staff buildings and having meetings with them, talking to them about budgets, levies. Grateful for Pat and Trevor and Amy and Vinnie for joining me in those conversations and letting people ask questions and giving time for us to share a little bit more information on that. Coupled with that, have been doing nothing but levy promotion with civic and community groups. If you care to log online, you can go to the KGBO, what was it, one-hour talk back? Yep, field of questions from our community. Personally, I thought it went pretty well, but yeah, if you want to listen to what I had to say, it was good. We are, as our students noted, we're in the fourth quarter, so we have nine weeks of school left, and it's a busy time. Graduation plans are in full swing, but it's also a time that we just recognize and are cognizant of what that means for our students, our families, our staff, that it's a really busy time, and emotions can be frayed, tolerance can be low, and but optimism remains high. We want to see our kids finish through the remainder of the year and finish on a positive note, but it can be, it can be hard. Kids are really busy, staff are really busy, and it's interesting how busy we get trying to plan for the end of the year and the upcoming year during this time. So, those are my announcements.
Thank you. We're now on to the consent agenda. There's no board discussion for consent agenda items, as these are routine items, but if any member of the board wishes to discuss a consent agenda item, there must be a motion made, seconded, and voted upon to move the item onto the agenda. Anyone needing to do that? If not, we'll go on first to acknowledging the MCPS student attendance agreements. These are listed on page 19. And also to ratify out-of-district attendance agreements. Do I have an elementary motion to approve the elementary consent agenda items? So moved by Jeff Afgharaz, second. Seconded by Meg. Whichard, thank you. Any board discussion? Oh, actually, we don't need any board discussion. Any public comments regarding these agenda items? Seeing none, we'll vote on the elementary motion. All in favor, elementary? Of those present, it's unanimous. Do we have a high school motion to approve the high school consent agenda items? So moved by trustee Wake. Any seconds? Jeff Afgharaz, seconded. Public comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, we can vote on the high school motion to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor of the board that is present? Thank you. Let's move on, then, to old business, and we are now discussing personnel negotiations and policy. We need to approve a second reading of Revised Board Policy 3141, Non-Resident Students, and Board Policy 7008, Tuition. Micah Hill will discuss these.
Thank you. As noted in the packet, we are recommending approval of both of these policies. They were put out for public comment, and a copy of those revised policies are attached. To refresh memories, House Bill 203 was a bill that basically enacted an open enrollment policy for school districts, where we had to unilaterally deny a out-of-district student the ability to come into our district. You have to add provisions and different things in rationale. They outlined a lot of that. I think the key on this one, moving forward, is that we left the date, we left some dates in there that are applicable for the policy moving forward, but for the purposes of this year and the timing, we are extending the enrollment deadline to May 14th. So, in that recommendation, you'll see that it says, "For the purposes of the school year 2324, the application deadline will be adjusted to May 14th." We just want that to be noted, because in future years, whether you're currently an out-of-district student attending our schools, or a future student looking to attend our schools, the application deadline will be January 31st of each subsequent year, to give us adequate time to prepare for staffing and class sizes and those different things. And then, so that really speaks to Policy 3141. Policy 7008 speaks to the fact that Pat, prior to July 15th, will need to send residents, resident districts, a bill for tuition. This is not a windfall of money for our school district. We will actually levy less money to our taxpayers, and the sending district will be levying the money to pay for those students to come to our district.
Does anyone on the board have questions about these two policies? Trustee Vogel?
Since this is our second reading, have we received any public comment on either of these?
No.
Trustee Mercer?
And then, so then it's all or nothing on that date? Like, if we have space, can we let people in, or is it just the way it works that we have to have it?
There is a provision in the policy that allows for discretion from the superintendent. What we're, I think, part of the reason, the way the policy was constructed, the way that it was, is that each one of these students needs to be approved by the board, similar to what we're doing, but if there's any denial of a student, it actually requires a hearing with the board in executive session for that reason for denial. And again, this comes back to, no school district wants to be put into a place where they're potentially discriminating against a student for any reason. That's why we establish, you know, we have to have classroom, we have to have space available for our own students first, and so it's not meant to put an unnecessary burden on the district, but we want to try and encapsulate that into, hopefully, a single session, and hopefully, we're not denying students if we have space and those kind of things, so.
Trustee Decker?
Thanks. I'm curious, in conversations with other superintendents around the state, if there have been any districts that already are, you know, have been accepting these applications already and already opened it up, or that sort of thing. What are people seeing? What are people doing with this?
Yeah. The one that I'm most familiar with is Bozeman, because they adopted this policy right away after it was enacted. They put a January 31st deadline. They had ninety students from out-of-district asked to be enrolled in their district. Forty-three of them were current students, so they picked up another forty-five, forty-seven students in that process. And right now, even locally, when students are applying, and depending on where different boards are at in their process, for example, Hellgate Elementary sends us a letter that says, "These are resident students of MCPS. We're notifying you within the ten days of their application. Our board will meet, and we'll let you know within ten days of their approval to attend that district that that happened," and then they'll send us the bill to levy against our taxpayers for them to attend Hellgate Elementary. So it's in process.
Other questions? Trustee Mercer?
Just one more. So then, is this something that's going to be loud on, like, our website, or is this just kind of the state of affairs? Like, I mean, I just like, what are we, are we?
Are we promoting it?
Yeah. Are we promoting this, or does it just kind of is?
It is. And part of the reason why we're not promoting it is, we obviously feel the effects of decreased enrollment in our district, and for a district our size, it's pretty substantial when you're down 471 students, and it represents about three and a quarter million dollars of budget authority. I think when we look at our partner districts, and we want to be, continue to be partner districts, they send their students to our high schools. I don't think the idea is that we're trying to capture their students. We've always had students who want to come here, and they do it for a variety of reasons, and we have students who go other places for those same reasons. Their parents maybe work in that district, and it's easier from a childcare perspective, or maybe they have fond memories of when they were there, or they just want a smaller school experience, or, like, the reasons are there. I think MCPS has, for a long time, been in a position where we just didn't have room, and so we pretty much just said, "Sorry, we aren't accepting anybody," without really giving a reason or a justification.
Trustee Decker?
Thanks. We may have talked about this when we saw this policy the first time around, but I'm just curious if you could remind me how this plays with applications to enroll in charter schools, and if someone from outside our district could apply to the district and then also apply to attend one of our charter schools?
Yeah, so this policy is in effect for charter schools, for an out-of-district student. They would first have to be accepted into the district and then would be accepted into the charter school. And yes, we do have people from out-of-district who are asking and inquiring about our charter schools.
If not, can I ask for a full board motion that, as the administration recommends, trustees adopt the revised policy as presented with the dates as outlined for the school year For the purposes of the current school year, the application deadline will be adjusted to May 14th, 2024. Anyone want to make that motion? Trustee Wake and seconded by trustee Decker. Any final comments from the board? See, is there any public comments on this item? Again, seeing none, we can bring it to a vote. All in favor of approving these two policies? Please raise your hand. Unanimous of all the trustees present? Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have an information item tonight on school start and end times and bus schedules, and I believe Amy Shadok and Vinnie Giacomo, which I didn't say right, Assistant Superintendents, will present.
Thanks. Go ahead, Micah.
I'm going to, I'll speak first. Part of the reason why this is information tonight is, we want our board to be able to have an opportunity to listen, hear, digest information, ask questions. Maybe there will be public comment, but this really reflects months of effort and process, which I'm really proud of, especially for Amy and Vinnie, but also for Terry and Burley, because a lot of this is reflected also in transportation and how we operate as a district, and can we make these things work? And really, this was in my direction, based off of conversations that I had had with our various groups, within our teachers' union, with administrators, with parents, and there were just, there was a lot of conversation around this, and I know it had been somewhat looked at in the prior year. I think a survey went out with one question, and it came back a third, a third, a third of what people thought. And so Amy and Vinnie did a great job of taking this to the next level, to really see where our community stands on this, both from a staff perspective, a student perspective, and a community perspective. So, I am now going to turn it over to both of them, and we also have Terry and Burley here, who will provide some commentary as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Superintendent Hill, for the acknowledgement and taking the first couple of slides. So, Tyler, we're going to have to try to get caught up here, so, no, I appreciate it. So, as Superintendent Hill alluded to, this has been, this has been a several-month process. It really did start early in the fall, and we'll go through kind of what the process looked like, our effort to try to make sure it was transparent as possible, and then how we tried to solicit feedback from a variety of community members. So, if you, if you can remember, and we can go to the next slide, Tyler, just to give you some context and where the conversation started for us, if you see up on the slide, you have the start and dismissal times of 2021, so that was right as we were heading into COVID. You can see what that schedule looked like, and if you remember, when we went into COVID and we had to change what our schedule looked like in general, and we moved to the hybrid model, we had the discussion about what is the schedule going to look like daily. So, a couple key things, and then, and then I'll have Amy jump in. If you look at the K3, 4, 5 schedule, you're going to notice that they were not common dismissal times for 4, 5. They ended at 3:30. You have, obviously, the high school schedule that started at 7:50, and then you had your middle school that was kind of sandwiched in between there. And once we moved away from that schedule and into COVID, you can see that we had a common start and end time for K5. Middle school started earlier, and then Amy's going to go through the process here in a little bit of where we landed with high school and their later start. So, this is just kind of that general context for all of us, so we know where we were, where we're at currently. we're at currently, and then the recommendations later of where we're hoping to go.
So on our next slide is the timeline. And some of you may remember, back in November of 2016, that was the School Day Study Committee that consisted of 24 members and six meetings. Ginny Tribe actually facilitated that, that work. And then in May of 2017, the trustees authorized administration to proceed with the plan to implement later start times for the high schools. In this timeline, we're going to go through each one of these so that you have a good idea and please don't hesitate to ask questions as well. In August of 2021, that is in the height of COVID and during, just like Vinnie said, our hybrid schedule. In 20, December of 2022 was, this keeps cutting out, there was another survey, the one-question survey, and we'll go over that and the results as well. And then our work started with surveys around the district to parents and, and students and staff. And so we're going to go through each one of these. So Tyler, if you'll go to the next one. This is the School Day Study Committee. And really what they came down to, their recommendation was to start high schools at 8:40. And this was in lieu of all of the work that was done, the research and, and those, those meetings of that working group. And, and in line with the American Academy of Pediatrics that recommends that, that adolescents begin school no earlier than 8:30. But there was, there was a snag. This would cost a lot of money. And so we weren't able to implement this at that time. It was over half a million dollars. It was at least 14 bus routes if we went with the 8:40 start. So fast forward to 2021.
So we knew, we knew pretty early on, and I can speak for myself, I was, I was a K5 principal right when we headed into this process in August and developing that hybrid model. Amy was still in a different district role, but had just come out of her principalship at Lewis and Clark. And so we, we lived this along with our colleagues. And some of the challenges that came with that schedule really were about collaboration time with staff. We figured out pretty early on when we changed to the 8:15 to 3:15. Those morning meetings, those schedules with our staff were really challenging. And then the end of the day, we didn't have as much time with our staff and really staff together. So we really started to hear a lot of feedback about the challenges of collaboration, the PLC model that we had worked really hard on developing and cultivating, and just really the sense of feeling rushed with this new schedule. The high school, and Amy will talk about it here in a little bit, there was some success with the late start, but it also presented some challenges pretty quick. The challenges of the later end of the day, how that was flowing into students that potentially had work, internships, volunteering, our students that were in activities, athletics. If you remember, double, other AA schools didn't change their schedule. So it forced us to go to events and we're leaving earlier. Our high school students are missing more periods and it would just kind of be this, this snowball effect. And we were hearing pretty consistently about the challenges of that schedule at the high school level. Some other challenges at the K5 level really, really were a lot around our K3 students. So they don't have the same instructional hour requirements of our 4, 5. Their day had been shorter for a long time. If you remember, we would dismiss at 3:00. Even the 15 minutes of extending and layering that with the challenges that were coming out of COVID with our primary students that had missed a year, maybe didn't have the same preschool experience or childcare experience coming into school. It all just kind of felt like it was adding and adding to this momentum of a really challenging schedule. So we knew, and Rob and, and those that were on the board remember, as he came to us to talk about some different models and looking at a schedule, a lot of these complexities were coming into that as well.
So like Micah had referred, the survey that happened in December of 2022, there was really just one question and it was three options. And that, here are the results of that. Again, it was a third, a third, a third. So we really didn't gain any kind of information or guidance in moving forward with that. And so that really kind of spurred us on to look a lot deeper into getting student voice, getting parent voice, getting teacher voice, and from a number of different platforms. So Vinnie's going to talk about that.
And I think that, I don't want to speak for Superintendent Hill, but I think that was one of the pieces, when he came on last summer, he had, he had gotten feedback pretty early and right away about some of the, the challenges with the schedule. And, and like Amy alluded to, we didn't have a lot of meat to the answers and understanding the why. And so Mike had challenged us and said, you know, can we come up with a process where even if we don't change anything, are there wins here? Do we have a better understanding of what works with the schedule, what's challenging? And, and can we look at things in a different way to move student achievement? So really, the process for Amy and I started last November, December. I'm going to go through a little bit of what that, what that process and soliciting that feedback from community members looked like. So November, December, before we went into winter break, Amy and I met with a, a building rep of every district building in, in, in MCPS. So we had a chance to interview a staff member. We asked them a variety of questions that usually tailored 10 to 15. We had a standard set and then it would lead into some dialogue back and forth. Tell us more about this. What worked? What were the challenges? So that really started kind of this baseline understanding for Amy and I. We started to develop some themes really quick, like what works well, what is challenging? We came out of winter break and Micah really wanted to make this inclusive and get as much community feedback as possible. So we took some time coming out of winter break and trying to develop a survey that maybe wouldn't just give us a third, a third, a third. Maybe we could get some better sense of what works in the day. Are there other preferred times? What works instructionally? And not just about our parents, but are we getting student voice? And so in this survey, we added our 612 students. And then obviously, we added our staff to get a sense of what works for them and what are the challenges. From the survey, we also had a question that asked community members, would you be willing to be a part of a community forum? And so late in January, not just with the feedback of families, in this very room, Amy and I had 20 family members that, that, and, and community members that said, "We'd like to come." And, you know, it was a little bit of hopes and dreams, some successes and challenges, you know, pie in the sky. And then we mapped out and we started to notice some very consistent themes amongst kind of all of our community members. And, and that really allowed us to look at some next steps and then bring O and M and Beach in and say, "Okay, how do we look at this? Are there some other times that we could look at and what are those complexities?" Terry Phelan, who has worked harder and more hours on this than any of us, and really appreciate his effort and his focus around this project, he's going to talk a little bit about in general, because this is not his first go-around. So he's going to talk just a little bit about what does it look like when we talk about a bell audit and we look at changing busing times? And then we'll get into kind of our recommendation and then what Terry needed to work with around the guidance that we had given him. So go ahead, Terry.
Thank you, Vinnie. I'd like to start off just by giving a brief explanation of the, our transportation program as a whole. Excuse me. We have 90 routes, 54 of which are regular ed and 36 are special needs routes. Each route can represent or can cover up to six individual pieces of the day. That includes a middle school version or a middle school leg, a K5 leg and high school leg, both morning and afternoon. And I'll revisit this when I show you a visual aid later. But one route can do up to six things. Because we have three big grade bands, we call it a three-tiered system. It's what we strive for. And it's basically the most effective use of the resources that you have. And it basically consists of all your resources being as active as possible, serving the community at one time throughout the day, at all times throughout the day, when, when they're, when they're called upon. Our current program also consists of, in addition to the, or complementary to the 90 routes, about 100 buses. That includes spare buses. And ideally, we want the transportation program to have a couple of spare drivers and attendants just to support any deviations from the daily norm, which would be somebody on vacation, somebody calling in sick, other, other very acute things that might happen throughout the day as well. So that's what our system, our current program looks like. Now, one of the things that always comes up is the cost of transportation. For the fiscal, for the current fiscal year, an individual bus route with a three-hour minimum service is about $60,000 annually. A special needs route is the same as that, but also includes an attendant, which has a different associated cost. Going into next year, for fiscal, fiscal year 25, that increase, that, that approximate route cost will increase to about $65,000 for a three-hour minimum level of service. When looking to making adjustments to routes, we look to partner with Beach, our contractor, as well as TransFinder, our software provider for routing services, to, to strive to maintain the three-tiered system. And any changes to the routes that we talk about, first of all, we have to make sure we have the resources. And second of all, with the routing software, we can visualize and manipulate routes going, you know, to, to develop alternative plans or whatever. And that includes things like truncating routes, coupling routes, dividing a route into multiple other legs, designing, redesigning the route path, redesigning the stop area, moving one stop from one route to another, et cetera, et cetera. There's a, there's a myriad of things you can look at if you're looking to redesign a system. And we're hoping to do that up until now and going forward in support of a new, the new bell proposal.
Great. Thanks, Terry. So we're just going to jump really quick into the survey, just so you have an idea of what it looked like between the three bands. And spoiler alert, I'm just going to share with everybody that everyone wanted 8:30. So just so we're all understanding that and we want to know why some don't get 8:30. As Terry pointed out, we run a three-tiered system. It's impossible to have all three groups run at the same time. So with that in mind, we, we developed some surveys that had a variety of times between 7:45 to 9:00. And then we had a pretty set consistent survey question in forum for all three bands. If you look at the K5 survey, what we saw a lot of was, again, I'll go back to that comment around common dismissal, families, especially K5, liking their students, getting there at the same time at 8:15, being done at the same time at 3:15. That, that was pretty passionate. We heard that in the community group and then in the parent voice with the survey. We also heard from staff that it didn't, it just felt rushed as we went back to that early feedback of the, of the 2021 bell schedule, challenges around collaborating, PLC time, meeting on students, meeting on care plans, bringing in other district members that work in other parts of MCPS and having enough time to collaborate with them to move student achievement and, and help support all staff. It really, really became evident at that time as well, a lot of feedback from K2 staff and families just about the length of the day, stamina for, for kindergarten, first and second grade students, and pushing that time back another 15 minutes. 15 minutes doesn't seem like a lot, but I can tell you as a former principal, watching my kinder teacher at the end of the day, 15 minutes was, it means something for sure. And so that was another piece that, that they, they gave us a lot of feedback on. The majority, again, wanted the 8:30, but as we looked at it, the, the, the support and growth really moved more towards 8:15 to 8:00. The reason I say that is right when we went into COVID, we had what was called the, kind of like a trickle-in entry, if you remember. The, the day the bell was at 8:12, but we had this process where we didn't want kids outgrouping. We really let them come in at any time and we had kids starting to come in through the door at 8 o'clock. So this really wouldn't be outside the norm if we bumped up their time because we had done it for a few years in those initial few school years with, with COVID. As we go into middle school, middle school's interesting. There wasn't a ton of pushback around the current model of middle school. If you look at the survey, and again, we had almost 1,000 respondents, it really was supported. If you look at the, if you look at the data, almost 70% of the responses were either fine with the current schedule or in support of it. I would say that was the largest of any of the three bands. Really, the complexity of middle school comes into the daily schedule. We've had a lot of conversations and we just had a principal meeting today. We had a union meeting last week with our 6, 8 reps. It's more about how the daily schedule is built than it is the start and end time for them. And what I mean by that is what does win look like? And win is what I need. It's a program that we design for each student. Are we making it as efficient and as, and as impactful for students as we can? Some great conversation and dialogue with staff, with students, parents. We had a lot of parents that didn't know what win was, others that were a huge advocate and said, "The one thing that don't get rid of is win for me." So it was a good dialogue for us to have with our building leaders and about where do we go from there? The other challenge that you have at middle school is you've got nine periods in middle school and a lunch. So a lot of transitions. So we've talked a lot about what will that look like next year? How do we create a system that we feel is beneficial, most, most efficient and beneficial for all students? So not a lot of negative feedback in terms of, of 6, 8, or I should say 6, 8, just with the, the general start and end time.
Yeah, anytime.
Thank you so much for all your work. I should have waited for you to call me. I do what I want. Thank you so much for this. Question number one is we have gone over this like on my short tenure of being on board here. When is the next, if, when we set this, when's the next time we are going to do this again?
That's, that's a great, that's a great question. I was, I was shooting for like September 8th would be the start again. Trustee Witcher, I, I totally echo and I, I, I knew this question was going to come from a trustee because it's a fair question. I think where we've been for a while is we all are struggling with the schedule and we look at it. And I don't think we've gone to the depth that we have this round and thinking outside the box in terms of routes, budget challenges, looking at different ways to get students to school, looking at different ways to design the start of the day. We've also looked at some different ways in terms of minutes at the K5 level that we haven't before. And so I, that would be my hope. Now, I think we'll always go to what does that look like long-term? How do we refine the schedule? Those things may come up at times, but I would hope this would be our last recommendation and approval for a while.
Awesome. So if I'm doing my math correctly, that's shortening the elementary school day by 15 minutes. And one, is that okay for credentialing? And two, is it, what was the, is it because teachers, I mean, trust me, I know 15 minutes makes a really big difference? Was it, I'm, so I'm sure it was like widely accepted by teachers and everybody that was on there. Was that part of the reason? What are we risking by shortening the day by 15 minutes? And that sort of stuff?
Yes. Great, great question. And you, you beat me to it. One of the, one of the areas that I think we heard most from staff was, especially at the K5 level, is how do we get extended amount of time to meet? We looked at, there's state code that allows us to use, if we have structured recess during lunch, we can use those minutes towards our instructional hours during the year. So we can't use seat time when they're eating as instructional minutes. But if we have a focused, structured recess for students, we can add that time and that, that for our students, that, that would help build in that time. I'll, I'll get to that in a second. The other piece to this was what do we do if we're going to create time for staff? We would essentially be telling staff, "Students are done at 2:15, 2:50. Your contract's going to go till 3:50. You have an hour every day to meet PLC, work with staff, work with others in the, in the district to help move student growth."
Other questions? Trustee Decker?
I have a lot of questions about the concept of a structured recess, but I'm gonna, I might leave that to trustee Witcher. My question though is actually about the middle school component of the survey and whether you, and I'm sure that you did, but whether you took a look at the data kind of school by school? Because I know we've had a lot of conversation about how dang early the kids on the north and west side have to leave home to make it for a 7:50 start. Those kids are getting on the bus at 7:00 AM or earlier. And so just, I was curious as to whether there were any discrepancies between the satisfaction level of parents at the different schools about what that schedule looks like. Also, in the data, whether you
Also, in the data, whether you have data about tardiness or anything like that, like pre the change in schedule to the 7:50 start for Porter versus post? Because I would be curious about attendance rates and tardiness in terms of that really early start for the kids who have to get across town and who are least likely in some ways to maybe have a parent to drive them if they miss the bus.
Yeah. A couple of great questions in there. I think if you look back at the data, there, there, the discussions that we had with buildings and with administration and all, I think, I think some saw some challenges, but in general, the design of the day, there was positive feedback about what the start and end time looked like. What, what was interesting is when we were talking with middle schools is just the question around engagement in general. And so trying to define, is it the impact of COVID and where we're at now? Is it really the start time? And I, I don't know how, how good of data we have to, to draw and decipher that yet. I would say to trustee Witcher, that'll be one thing we look at over the next several years, is if we do end up adopting this and the board approves, what does it look like for the next two to three years with the spell change and looking at attendance and engagement? But I don't have any strong data in terms of tardiness now versus pre-COVID or right when we hit, just anecdotal and informal. And I think more is centered around really engagement of each student and how are we getting them there to school? And there's some other things we're working on at the district level around universal attendance, attendance matters, bringing in our community members about how we, how are we going to engage moving forward? And to me, that's another big piece that has to work simultaneously with everything else we're doing.
So just to speak to the number of parents and students who responded, do you have like a breakdown of how many students from Washington, Meadow Hill, and Porter?
Yep. We could, I could get that to the board and we can send that to you so you can look it over. Yep. I just didn't, we didn't include it in this packet. Yep.
Trustee Mercer?
Question for Mike at first. So this is a board vote in the, not today, but eventually this is a board vote?
Yeah. You know, when we look at it, one of the things that contractually our certified staff has is a requirement for the board to identify the start and end of the day. So you guys set the, the, the day, so eight hours, but it could be, you know, this grade band is starting at this time and ending at this time. So that's why we brought it to the board for a vote and not just an administrative procedure.
Go ahead.
So my appreciation is, I, I'm glad, the first time to see the timeline. So one thing that, slight comment matters to me is that a previous board studied this, they came to a decision. For me to disagree with that, I would need to go through a similar process before I'm just going to willy-nilly decide, override that prior decision that was thought out for me. So that, that matters to me that, that's there. So I have questions, though. So question, so we're, so we cut 15 minutes from 6'8", we cut five from high school, and we're proposing to cut another five. We're going to now use recess as education time. I mean, why is this okay? Why is reducing the amount of the education service we're providing but charging the same amount an acceptable thing to do?
I think a little of that would go into what you're determining as instructional growth and value for a student. So if we have students that are going to benefit from social interaction, from systems out on the playground, from other skills that we want to give them, I would argue that that has an impact just like any instruction at times. And so I think it's going to, a little bit in the, the eye of the beholder. I know as a building principal at the K-5 level, the value that I put on social time for my students, time for them to interact and play without instruction, there, there is every bit to me the value in that as sitting in front of a board or, or doing math and reading at times. So for 15 minutes for me, to give a chance for a kid that's going to have a break coming out of a few hours of instruction, for them to have some facilitated growth in social interaction and play and game, for me, I think, I think is important.
I mean, I, I don't disagree it's important. I mean, just, but then to use it to offset, I mean, the recess is happening right now. I mean, and then, so how about the middle school? How are we cutting 15, how did we cut 15 minutes from the middle school?
We're, we're not cutting from the middle school.
Well, we, we did, right? I mean, it was 8:15 to 3:25, so that's 10 minutes more than the hour, and now it's 7:50 to 45, which is five minutes less than the hour. So, I mean, napkin math to me, we cut it by 15 minutes. How'd we do that?
Say that again. I'm sorry, trustee Mercer.
Well, I'm just doing math, but I'm just adding like, it used to be 8:15 to 3:25, so that's seven hours plus 10 minutes. Now it's 7:50 to 2:45, which is five minutes less than seven hours. So that's 15 minutes that went away. Where did they go?
I, I don't, I can't speak on the previous. The, the minutes in terms of now versus last year would be the same, but I don't have the, the historical context of the change from 6'8" in, in those minutes.
Or how are we cutting five out of high school? I mean, how, how is that happening? Is it just coming out, is it like between classes or, I mean, don't we have, aren't we stuck with the amount of minutes per year? I thought that was just like a hard number.
Yeah. The requirement is 1080, so that's what we have to make sure that we provide. And, and we are doing that in all three bands. And then the other piece to this, which, which I think is fair, trustee Mercer, the other piece, when you have these conversations with teachers, with administrators, again, it goes back to, I think, the efficiency and impact in buildings and being able to provide teachers with an hour of PLC every day where they're coming together, talking and having time, uninterrupted time. Is that more impactful? Is that going to move the needle when we talk about student achievement? And what is that versus a 15-minute change in structure day in and day out? I know that the conversations I've had with the union, union members, union reps, principals, they highly value that hour of time every day if it's possible, and that teacher efficacy that we know and the research tells us is going to improve student outcomes more than anything.
Other questions? Yes, trustee Witcher?
This is always going to be like such a multi-layered conversation. Actually, I, I do believe that the school system taking the advantage of, of play-based education is an absolutely beautiful thing. And our kids right now are struggling to grasp the basic fundamentals of play, and a child's job is to play. And so I'm, I, all the research points to it. I spent my professional career doing it. If we are having a facilitated 15 minutes while the kids are also getting the opportunity to have free discretionary time, it could actually be a beautiful thing, and I think it's the way education should be in a lot of, a lot of facets. But of course, I want the kids to have, a kid defines play as time with no adult being around. So if adult's around, it's not play, according to a kid. But some structured, our kids are in need of being taught how to interact socially. So this could be a really time, and I'm actually really excited about that. What I am nervous about is the 2:50 time. Every other after-school program, every preschool in town, and parents have set their work schedule. And so as a board, we need to move on this because people's entire lives depend on being able to make this work with their life. And I understand, I've been listening to other school boards, Target Ranges, talking about going to four days a week, and the teachers are like, "Well, we're not at childcare." Well, we live in 2024. We are all this together. So the 2:50 is almost half an hour before all the preschools get out in a time that they can get their kids out and then go pick up elementary school. All the after-school programs in town, Boys &amp; Girls Sub, YMCA, Parks &amp; Rec set their fees on X amount of time that they're with their children. And so that all needs to be a rolling process as well. So the 2:50 scares me for working parents. But I want to make the teachers happy so badly. So that's kind of my 50 cents for all that.
Yeah. I feel like at times, maybe you and superintendent Hill looked this over, and you guys are kind of taking my, my thunder. That was on a couple of my slides at the end. I think a part of this will have to be us moving, and that's why we came. We actually had hoped to get to this, get this to you in March because of that very reason that trustee Witcher is saying, and then partnering, partnering with our community and saying, "What is this going to look like? How do we make this work?" I don't disagree. It's going to be an adjustment. And then again, I go back to there is no perfect schedule. Any schedule that we go to, we're going to find flaw, and we're going to find challenges. We're living that right now with the current model. I just know that as, as we've put the timing and the feedback that we've gotten, we're pretty passionate about making this recommendation to the board.
Trustee Mercer?
So, okay, so a quick comment. Also for a lot of kids, their day doesn't end when the school day ends because they, their parents are still working. So it just, it doesn't shorten their day, it just shortens where, it just changes where they are. Explain to me again, though, why, so I'm also totally in favor for play and structured play and all that, but why does that mean the school day should get 15 minutes shorter? I, I don't get the connection between why this good thing about what we should do on the playgrounds, which, yeah, I think we should probably go do. Why does that mean the day gets 15 minutes shorter?
I, I think the easy answer to that is from a transportation perspective. We can't put everything back-to-back-to-back from a transportation perspective without having some sort of a, a distance between one, one grade level ends and another ends in order to be able to pull all the pieces together. This is the compromise or the adjustment. Beach cannot handle and manage, it would be like running three bus systems at the same time for each of those different grade bands. And Vinny, you might add a little bit more, but that, that becomes the biggest part of it is how, when, when a bus is going to be used in multiple routes for, say, an elementary and a middle school, can it get from this point at this school to this point at this school in order to pick up, drop off, combo kids? It's much more complex than just we cut 15 minutes out.
And the other piece that I would add, trustee Mercer, is again, going back to what the state requires us to do in terms of instructional hours, going back to the 1080, and then also the hours in which we get staff. And so if I have an eight-hour workday, I've got to, if, if, if that time with staff and that hour is so valuable, we have to try to find a way to fit that within an eight-hour workday. And so that's where you go when you start thinking outside the box, how are you going to adjust time to lengthen the PLC time for staff and get to an hour of uninterrupted? I know you, our, our board does an amazing job of visiting buildings. When you have a chance to visit buildings and you see the end of the day, and teach, and kids going, and a teacher that hasn't used the bathroom, hasn't checked their email, their phone, two kids that lost their shoes, a parent that wants to do a brief parent-teacher conference, by the time all those things go, the 45 minutes to 30 minutes they have now turns into 10 to 15. And so trying as best we can to protect some, some time for teachers, to me, is, is one of the hills that we have pushed probably most through all of this. And again, with the intention of moving student growth through that time and that authentic time to collaborate and meet.
So if we're, can you guys go back, take me back? I'm a new parent, new to school board. Why do we have the hour early out on Thursdays? And if we're doing this and taking 15 minutes, do we still have to do that extra hour on Thursdays? Or can we just make every day be this, and make it so nice for families and humans?
I don't want to steal Trevor's HR thunder, so I didn't know if he was going to jump in. But if he doesn't, just in the past, and trustee Mercer's had it, had an opportunity to sit on our collective bargaining negotiations, but part of the early out is a contract negotiated item, and there's a lot of history within that early out. So that would have to be bargained at the table and a discussion of what that looks like moving forward. Trevor, I hope I didn't destroy you there.
No, there's no thunder. Yeah, I, I think, I think historic is, is the word that comes to mind, but, but in, over the years, as the district has negotiated with teachers, when they couldn't give adequate raises, they've traded time. So of the early outs that currently exist, the majority of them are labeled as teacher work time, which means you, you can't have meetings, it's their time to do what they need to do. And that's really the long and short of it. And that's just one of, you know, a number of, of rocks that they're up against that they haven't mentioned. The contracted, you know, 45-minute duty-free lunch period, the amount of prep time that teachers are, I mean, bussing's one, one rock here, but there are many. So kudos to them for even trying.
Trustee Mercer?
Kudos for them for trying. I will agree with that. But my, my fundamental question is, why? Why are we changing? I get what you're saying about bussing, but what we're doing right now, works for bussing, we're bussing. So why are we, and every one of these parent recommendations, 60% for the current in high school, you said everyone is neutral or happy with middle school, which surprises me, but strong majority of parents are 8:15, which is what it used to be for elementary. No majority of parents wants to change this. We don't need a bussing to change it, so why are we changing it?
That's a great question. At the end of the day, whether we change the schedule or not, has no direct impact on me. It has no direct impact on them, and really has no direct impact on this board. Who it does impact are the parents and the kids and the staff. And so when I came on board, it was like, I did my 100 days of listening, and what are the things that are out there, and having conversations in the community and with our staff, and just listening and trying to absorb, one of the things that came up was the bell schedule, the start and end, the, the difficulty that we have, the lost instructional time that teachers experience, there, there's just a multitude of layers to this. And we could sit back and say, "Yeah, everything's fine. Don't worry about it." Like, it's working. But is it working to the benefit of our students? Are we actually moving the needle on student achievement? One of the things that we're trying to elicit out of this, and what's really hard, someone brought up the, the data question. What's the data? Like, is attendance better? Anecdotally, teachers are saying, "No, attendance isn't better." Parents aren't saying, "Yeah, my kid's getting to school on time." Kids are still trickling in between when school actually starts and a half hour after it starts. We're dealing with a, a compounding issues of how do we engage our students? How do we also protect our staff? When we say to our staff, "Hey, your day ends at 3:55, and your contract day ends at 4 o'clock, we give you five minutes at the end of the day to respond to parents' emails, to check in with a kid, to make up a test." And so we're asking our staff to come back after they're out of their contract to continue to work for nothing. And they're giving up and they're sacrificing their time with their families. And so this is, this is part of a, a bigger, broader thing. If the board says, "Hey, we don't want to mess with this," I'm, I'm fine with that. Like, my day goes on, my life goes on, everybody's life goes on. But I'm also trying to respond to a community that's saying, "Please listen. Please just take a listen. We know that there is not going to be a perfect schedule on this." We recognize that, and we, we've talked with our union people about it. We've talked with our principals about it and our families. But coming out of all of this and the, and the work that went into it is ultimately a recommendation from us to say, "Trustees, please trust us when we say we've been listening, we've been having these conversations. We realize it's not going to be perfect. We realize we're going to have some things to do from a transportation perspective, work to do with our community partners from the Y and Parks &amp; Rec, some educating, some communication with our parents. And part of the reason why it's in front of you tonight as information is because we want you to digest this and to ask the questions." So we're, we're appreciative of the conversation, but if the question is fundamentally why? Because people have asked for it, and we're just trying to provide that. We didn't need to do this. This is, we don't want it to be an exercise in futility.
Trustee Decker?
I just want to thank you both for sharing this. I know we've now like totally, this discussion kind of into the middle of your presentation, so thank you for your forbearance about all that, too. And, and thank you for starting in 2016 or 2017 to bring us up to date, because my answer to, to why around this has to do also with the fact, this is kind of unfinished business in that we really have been sort of like looking toward a time of setting up a schedule that we could really live with, that was based on, like, first and foremost, the science that was really, like, dived into deeply by folks, and then also based on what folks, all the, like stakeholders are saying kind of broadly. And the fact that we started doing late, 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 late start for high school during COVID was really not an intentional, thoughtful, best-practice decision. It was what worked. Like, so many things during COVID, we kind of like started doing it. But I don't think that, that anyone, I, I haven't heard from any quarter that anyone is like in love with that schedule. It's just that we had a later start for the first time because we were in such dire, desperate straits to get things kind of figured out. Like, everybody was kind of scrambling. And sticking with a scramble-made decision is not necessarily like a logical way to go forward with this either. But by gosh, I hope that trustee Witcher is right and that we're not like making this decision, well, that you all aren't making this decision again in like a year.
I actually have a question, because I remember our discussions from, I, I don't know how long ago it was, two years, one year, but one of the things that came up over and over again was at the high school level was athletic situation, and could you talk to that?
Yeah. So this is our next slide. High school. Good. Transition. That's great. So if we look at that next slide, you know, we had over 1,000 parent
So if we look at that next slide, you know, we had over 1,000 parent responses. We had close to 800 student responses, which is something that we hadn't had, and 258 staff responses. Although the parents support the current schedule, that late start, only 23% believe that the later dismissal has been positive. And that's what we're hearing over and over and over again at the high school level, that yes, the late start has been beneficial. How late do we need to go? Because the day is ending at four o'clock for these kids. It is getting in the way of employment, family time, not just athletics, but activities, also athletics. And so that's, that's been a big component to this. And that's been kind of the collateral damage of starting so late, we end so late. So, and then of course, transportation has been a, a topic that, that we always have to, to address, but only 16% of students report using a school bus as their primary mode of transportation. So as we're looking at this, and, and Vinny will talk about it at the end, but what are our next steps? What are things that we have to take into consideration and so forth as far as getting kids safe to school? So that was the, the piece of the, the high school that I think is a huge part of this conversation and started, yeah, way back in 2016.
I think the other thing that I'm hearing when I, when I talk to, one, high school students, I employ a lot of them and their schedules are poopy for that. Two, a lot of them, they can't get home to take care of their younger siblings. Three, in talking to high school teachers, if the soccer team, who they all sign up to be in the same class, has a game in Great Falls, they're all gone for that Friday of instruction.
And it's usually a Thursday, so they're missing block days, which is even bigger.
Block days, and how frustrating that is. You know, so I'm, and then also all the teachers who have kids are home so late after their small children are out. It's like a, it's like a multifaceted thing. And so I just, I guess I'm just really interested, it seems like we're bumping the start time back to high school to be a lot earlier and then bumping, sorry, I kind of lost track of my, I can't remember now. Talk amongst yourselves.
Okay, so the next slide, Tyler, talks about our preliminary recommendation. And so this is what we are proposing is K5 start at 8:05 and dismissal time at 2:50. 6-8 is 7:50 to 2:45. And high school, we've got some wiggle room here, probably 8:35 to 3:35 is, is, we were aiming towards 8:30 to 3:30, but I think we might land on, on 8:35 and 3:35. The other component to this is the early out, like Ms. Witcher had talked about, is high school had a late start on Thursdays, so they were even later starting. And so what we'd like to do is have it consistent across the district where all, it's early out at the high school level as, as well on Thursdays.
Yes, just a minute. Trustee Agaros.
You're not the first. It's okay, it's a mouthful. This is a horrible discussion, right? You're either, either you're going to help teachers or you're going to help parents. Nobody's going to be happy with what you come up, or not everybody's going to be happy with this. This is what we've dealt with for years. I want to make one comment, just for the public's sake. From August of '21 until this last fall, the only thing we did as a school district was not just send out a survey. We had multiple discussions. We had mostly around transportation. I know Burley and Terry were part of that and Pat was part of all of them. So there was a lot, and I know I was in those meetings, so there's a lot of discussions that happened pretty much immediately after we put it into effect in '21, because we had to start talking about '22. So between three superintendents in three years, we, we burned the midnight oil on this. I will say that everything that Vinny said is the same issues that we, were the issues three years ago, and they continue to be the same issues. I don't want to single any band out, but the issue has always been around high school. Middle school and elementary school have kind of figured out, there are a few issues. There's definitely the meeting times or things like that, but high school has always been the issue. It just has. I'm very frustrated, and this is going to be a long comment, and it's going to be followed by a question. It frustrates me, we've been through and we've toured all these high schools. Every time I go to a high school, Micah was standing next to me at Sentinel when I asked this question for the ninth time here about a month ago. I always ask about zero period. We act like the only periods that we can do in high school are when the bus shows up and when the bus leaves, and that's just not true for high school. Stephanie, not to single out one of our principals, but she had a great response that we do have zero periods. So my question, and I asked this last year when we talked about this, why don't we take better advantage of zero period? If I'm in athletics, I'm doing zero period and I'm getting out at 2:45. Why does that not happen? I don't understand that.
I can answer that. Most high schools do have a zero period. All three of the comprehensive high schools do. A piece of the zero period is about equity. There are kids that need to take the bus and they are not afforded that opportunity to take a zero period because they have to jump on a bus. And so that's why. But, but we can, we can look at the day for sure. I know Sentinel has probably the most zero periods that are offered right now, but...
I get that, and that's, that's always been the answer, and I get the equity of it. But we did this survey, and when we did the survey like a year ago, 20% of kids rode the bus. Now it's at 16% of kids, plus or minus from your survey, read the, ride the bus, which is great. We can make special accommodations for kids that need to ride the bus. That number of kids, 16% of the students, is in the hundreds that would probably, and when you whittle that down to those that are in activities, it's probably below that. So blowing up an entire system when we could just make accommodations for those kids doesn't seem like the smart answer to me. Russ and I, I'm our former superintendent, we, we went to, I went to two different schools with him, we sat in front of the teachers and had this discussion in front of them. And discussing this, it's, it's a very personal issue for all the schools. But the frustration that I have always had is, and I've told every teacher that I will talk to me about this, is this is your opportunity in a public institution to be innovative, okay? We've done the same things with minor tweaks for a long time. We can get out of our comfort zone this, we can do different things. That's what we should be taking advantage of with these things, right? We should innovate. We should find different ways. I love hearing the stuff that you're talking about here about what Meg loves. That kind of stuff is great. I am not, and look at me, I'm all passionate, I actually like your schedule, your recommendation. I think it's good. It's not that different than what we're doing right now. It really, really isn't. It's, you know, a few minutes earlier for everybody. So it's not a bad schedule. The frustration, frustrating thing to me is, and even if we accept this and this ends up being the schedule, is we need to be more innovative as a school district. We need to, to get out of our routines and get out of the stuff that we do and be innovative, right? We have that opportunity. We can do that. It's okay, you know? And I, and I encourage staff, teachers, everyone, bring that to Micah, bring that to Vinny, bring it to Amy. Have these discussions, push back and say, this is what we need, and not just fit it into this. It's, this is, here's the problem, here's a solution. That's, are, those are the kind of things that you can really make a change in a school district. I'm going to get off my soapbox because I just, this is way too long, but it's really frustrating because we've had these conversations for years now, and I think that there's unique ways to accomplish and make things better.
Trustee Mercer?
So there's a different spin on this. I mean, the only reason we did this is because COVID hit and it made it happen. It was not going to happen without that. That's what caused the innovation. It was a silver lining, and we said it at the time. I remember us saying in this room, like, it's a silver lining of this that we at least finally got to do this thing that was recommended six years before. And to the like, is this going to be the last time? That's why I'm getting cynical, is that it's sort of like sliding back to where it was and then it'll just keep pushing back, and that makes me cynical. I think you gotta, you gotta give us all the data, I think, because I, I mean, I just, I need it all. And I think, I think you're too ahead of the, I don't think, if you don't have, I guess I believe in data division-driven decisions. This is a large district, we have infrastructure, technology infrastructure, I don't know if we have a data person or not, but we should be able to tell whether there's been an improvement or disimprovement in things like attendance. Like, that should be a known data point. And until you have that, I don't see how you change.
Just to respond to that a little bit, two years ago, we switched our student database system. And so the data that was in is different, and you're also trying to compare two different start times, end times, some other tweaks within the schedule that would, really, I don't know how you would show like valid data between what was and what is. If we look at our, our student attendance data and we say, you know, four years ago, five years ago, our chronic absenteeism, chronically truant students were 15% of the population, and it's 16% today, would we say that the schedule didn't work? Or are we looking at other interventions that we would be trying to use to, to address that? So it, it's, and again, like, it just, a lot of it comes back to just being anecdotal when you're, when you're at the ground level. If you're in the classroom, if you're teaching that chemistry section and four kids don't show up out of a class of 25, you're missing 20% of your class. And, and what do you do with that? And if it was on a block day, when it was a two hour block and they don't show up, that's like double, it's a double whammy. And then what do we do with that? And so that's the hard part, I think, is just trying to wrap your, your head around what it is. Could I go and pull out attendance data? Yeah, I can give you the last two years, no problem. But I don't know whether or not the effect of the change of the schedule is what's driving that. I would rather look at that coupled with student achievement, which our report card just came out and things are pretty flat. Even with that, we're changing our assessment system next year. We're like, we're scrapping S-BAC, we're scrapping CRT, we're going to the mass system. Like, it's going to be really hard for us to give you like apples to apples comparisons on that data. So that's just the, I guess, the generic response to it. I understand the desire and the, the want to see like this versus this, but COVID threw in a whole nother four years of, we don't know what really happened.
And so I get all that, but then you, you hit to me the pediatric data, and at least the people that are coming to me actually love the current schedule. They don't want it earlier. They're saying, why if pediatricians are saying never any earlier than 8:30, would you just go right up against that line? I mean, that's what I, I'm hearing, the opposite. So then you're, and we all hear from different people, but if you don't have data to come in and you just have anecdote, then really I get cynical and I think it's just a popularity contest about like who likes daylight savings time or not, like morning people or evening time people. I mean, there's no, right? I mean, that's just what it is, and I'm a night person, so I like daylight savings. But I don't know how, how do you get away from that personality? And then if you're doing that contest and you have clear majorities in every school for parents saying, don't do this, I find that hard to do.
Other questions or comments, Grace, and then Jeff?
Thanks. I just want to call out a couple of things. I think, believe me, I love like calls for innovation and all of those things, like that is, that's great. And it's lovely to see enthusiasm around the idea of rethinking. I will also say this is an incredibly stressful time for people, and people are not always in the mood for lots of innovation at those times. We've also just come through some really pretty stressful times. What I will say is that this schedule is actually, I think, pretty different than the schedule that was in place before all of this got going, because high school used to start at 7:50. And so we're talking about a 40-minute shift that does bring us in line with the American Academy of Pediatrics. Now, were literally any of the kids who are currently in high school operating under that previous schedule? No, because that was eight years ago. Like, so the parents who are dealing with this are not thinking about that schedule, they're thinking about the current schedule. But the kids who are having this current schedule, they're not going to be here four years from now either to experience what it's like to go, like, that's part of the challenge of comparing data, too, is that it's always different kids, different families, different contexts. So we do in fact get that piece in this new schedule, like a time that works, and we address some of the very real concerns that staff have raised. And that feels really important to do in this time where staff are feeling maxed. So I'm, I'm feeling like the work that's been done to respond to people's lived experience, and while it's not showing up in the survey that people are like 100% saying this needs to change, what has shown up in the survey is dissatisfaction with elements of how the schedule is working for people. And I think those things have been addressed here in a way that also meets what pediatricians say is best for kids.
And Jeff?
I actually have a question this time. So you, there's a slide here that says beach transportation, route adjustments, busing needs and other considerations. What is the change, added routes, cut routes? What's, what's the effect on our routes?
Good transition. Nice. Terry, it's all on you.
Thank you, I guess. Tyler, do you have that? So this is not in the board packet, but I, my intent is to use it as a visual aid only. Is it on the, oh, okay. So what you're about to see is our transportation program as a whole, and I just want you to visualize that the entire program is on one spreadsheet and it's broken up into six columns, three that represent morning grade bands, three that represent afternoon grade bands, and it's middle school, grade school, high school, then middle school, grade school, high school. That's our entire program. Each column is a grade band and each row is a route or a bus. So in short, this is a working document that is intended to support the bell time change for next year. Beach provided this to us from their art, from their daily working document that they use whenever they make adjustments and stuff, especially from year to year. So we have one of these for every year, and so each individual cell in there represents a leg of a route. So you can see through the middle of the, across left to right, some of those service, some of those routes service six bands or six legs. So they're busy the entire day. Some of them, you can see some gaps up there, only service one or two. And that is because if you look at the second column from the left, that is grade school in the morning. That is our limitation because you can see that every bus we have, and in, on this chart, the bottom three are proposed routes for next, in support of the bell time study. But every route, or every bus, I mean, is busy for a 10 to 15 minute period in the morning. And that's the limitation for the most part. And so each leg up there represents, and they're labeled, if you could see this, I know it's noisy, but it's the entire system, and each one of those cells that has a description in it services an area of the community, which is, which is what we hope to do in going forward, find a place and a route and a bus and a driver going forward to service all of that. So once the original bell times were proposed, Vinny is a starting point, or Amy and Vinny, Beach handed us their spreadsheet so that we had a starting point, and their initial analysis said that, suggested that there were going to be a need of 24 additional routes to answer Jeff's question. Initially. So since then, that obviously suggested a need for a way, way deeper dive into efficiencies and other alternatives, which I mentioned, which I mentioned previously, truncating routes, doubling up routes, splitting routes, et cetera. So over the past several, several weeks, we've reduced that to what, what you're seeing now, and it's not intended to be red, but in general, you can see the yellow, the yellow fields are the routes that are, are the areas of the community that won't be serviced unless we add routes. And we're sitting at eight currently in the morning, four in the afternoon, but one route is one route. So even if the eight are implemented, we have four options in the afternoon to save something, because the eight in the morning equal eight in the afternoon, but only, excuse me, only four needed in the afternoon. So we are, with, with a few additional adjustments, I think we can get it down to four and maybe even move further, given a longer time for the more thorough analysis. Obviously, this is in anticipation of this meeting, so would I say that that's complete? No. But what I want everybody to remember is that each route represents a bus, represents a driver, and represents costs. And our hope is that with the further analysis going through up until now and going into the future, in support of the bell times proposed change, that we find additional opportunities to save, to eliminate the need for additional... for additional transportation resources.
Thanks, Terry.
Yes, Trustee Mercer.
Okay, so the left is what, the far left? Is elementary or?
The furthest left column is the name of the route. So it says Route 1, Route 2.
Of the three, which schools are they again? Would you just say that?
K, middle school's the first column, K-5 is the second column, high school is the third column.
Okay, so can you, I'm, I would have, I was totally surprised. I would have thought middle school, because they were all coming from all over. Why, why would we have neighborhood elementary schools? Are they the most bus-intensive? I just don't understand it. Can you help?
Yes. So, in the morning, the answer is because those buses can leave the bus barn anytime they need to. The elementary band is pushed up against both. Yes.
And so then my next question is, so those yellows and those changes are, but that's because you're proposing to change the elementary school time? And does the high school time have any effect on this? It seems to me that moving high school earlier would make busing more difficult, not less difficult.
There were cases for both of those, yes. So, if I could illustrate one example, there's a route that goes up the Rattlesnake for Hellgate that services the green, or the, yeah, the Greeno area, the Rattlesnake area, and then the area by Whittier School. One bus did that, is currently doing that. But that bus only does that because it takes so long. If I take that one bus, and I split it up into three available, three gaps on the high school side, because you can see that there's several gaps up there in the third column, I take three of those buses that are already active, but not, not doing everything all day, they have availability. I broke it up into three things as a, as part of the proposal for this bell time, so that that one bus that was servicing all those kids is now three buses. But we're making better use of those three buses. Because they're not just doing one thing in the morning and being done. That's, that's an example.
So, but how does that interplay with the high school times? And are the effects up there that are yellow because of the elementary move? Time move?
It's a, this is a representation of all of the bell times, and from current status to proposed.
And Jeff, Agaros had a question, too.
Yes. You're a good dude, Terry. This is good stuff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Simplified for my simple mind, what you're saying is, is we'd have to add, as it stands today, eight routes to do this new schedule.
A flick of the switch, yes. But I think, so this is actually prior to a couple other thoughts that came up. If you, if you could read it, in the upper-left-hand corner, the highest, the highest upper-left corner that is yellow is actually the bell times and the proposed schedule for drop-off. It says start time of 7:55. So, this is one of the things I haven't mentioned yet, and how to the minute this system is. In the analysis, it says start time of 7:55. I didn't make the change prior to this, because I was only using this as a visual aid. And Vinny has suggested a start time of 7:50, which is our current start time. Those five minutes, if you look at, so this used to be highlighted in red and have more information on it from me personally. But the third, scroll down if you don't mind. The third one on the right side that says Upper Garrett, it says current arrival time is 8 o'clock. Because Vinny moved it to 7:50, I get five minutes on that, which gets that bus in on time. So that's an example of immediately moving it from 8 to 7.
So.
And you can appreciate that.
I appreciate it all.
Because your kids go to that school.
I do. I'm gonna come over there and hug you in a second, I'm telling you. Worst-case scenario is eight. You think you can do better than that. If with eight added routes, financially, how much does that add to our budget?
For next year, at $65,000 apiece, oh, I'm sorry.
What I would say before he answers that, too, Jeff, we have every intention of trying to reduce them even further. The plan would not be to go in this to add that many routes. I think what he wanted to do as well is just give a sense of where we started with the 24 potentially, and then drastically dropping that. We have other ideas and other things that we're gonna look at that we haven't really explored. It goes back to Trustee Witcher's comment about what are we doing to make this work? I think, I think, and that's the difference in this proposal versus years previous, is thinking outside of the box in a way, from everything to minutes, what you talked about, innovation to instruction. How do we pick up kids? What does it look like? What are routes? Are we centralizing routes? Are we finding other ways to get kids to and from, where we can minimize the overall number of routes to this? But I'll let, I'll let Terry answer your question.
I think, well, I feel very strongly that four routes, it's gonna be, it's gonna turn into four routes. And that's up to date. What we, what we do moving forward from now until the start of school could show something completely different, could shine a spotlight on opportunities, and maybe we trim it down further. But right now, I would, I would probably land on four in the morning and four in the afternoon, which is four.
What does that mean for our to and from? What, how much dollars is that? Four routes, if it's four?
$260,000 additional.
This is a good discussion, but I'm just wondering if we want to continue it? Or if we would, are we gonna wait till it comes back to us with, with more information? Only just because I'm feeling sort of overwhelmed by all the possibilities. I also don't understand how anybody can keep on those, get those kids exactly there at the right time, when I can't do that in my own car. Stunning. But Trustee Mercer had a question.
Well, I guess I would throw out then the, whether we think about a work group meeting separate from, just as a thought, because, yeah, I just have plenty more questions. So, but two, just super brief questions here. So, I still am unclear, so are those four extra routes, or whatever number of extra routes it ends up being, is that because of the elementary change or the high school change? And then question number two, when you said we pay for like, a minimum three hours, is that then meaning that like, when there's a blank in the high school, we're paying for that, whether it's used or not? Because we've paid for that bus for three hours. So whether we're using it or not, we still paid for every one of those lines across?
Correct.
So then, prior question, what's causing it? The elementary or the high school change?
I don't, I think it's the change. I don't know if I could specify specifics. Because the tighter they get, because one of the things that Vinny and Amy came to me as part of their proposal was 8 o'clock, or no, I'm sorry, 7:50 to 2:45 for the K-8. And the first change I made was lobbied for 7:55 for K-5, and 7:40, or, and 7:45 for middle school. And that was because, in looking at those times that were in those columns, it eliminated the need for eight of those routes. Because it was within five minutes that transitioned. Just like the example I showed you about the Upper Garrett route. That five minutes made a massive difference in the mildly overwhelming need for 24 additional resources.
Trustee Agaros.
Very briefly, I just want to make a final comment, that this is all great work. I think the schedule is great. To Trustee Decker's point, and when I said it originally, I didn't mean that it wasn't that much different from our original. It's just not that much different than what we've had the last two and a half years. It's, it's pretty similar. I think it's great stuff. I think it's, probably helps our teachers a lot. It gives a lot of end-of-day time. So excellent work. And to do that all with just adding four, maybe less, bus routes is, I think, a work of magic. So, great job.
Anything else before we open it up for public comment? Anyone in the public want to speak to this issue?
I do have a comment from somebody who said they wanted to comment on a non-agenda item, however. Carl Schmidt, is this on this topic?
That's me, it's not really on this topic, but.
Okay, the time for public comment on non-agenda items has passed. So unless you intend to speak on an agenda item, I'm afraid we wouldn't be hearing from you today.
I can tell you from having three kids and having to do the whole hour-long bus route thing, my day would start at 7:30 for K-5, and at high school, and at 4:45, if you don't follow these people. Now, when I have to go to two different pediatric.
I'm sorry, are you making a public comment? Okay, please come up to the microphone and say, and spell your name.
My boss was, mom was a bus attendee. I have twins who go to Jeanette Rankin School. A high schooler that was, just left Hellgate. My day, like, on the system that COVID created, or that you, we kept going through, could start as early as like, 7:30, driving them to Jeanette Rankin, because, again, we switched school districts, what, two different times during that COVID period, and end up picking my daughter at Hellgate and getting home at 4:45. Now, like the rest of you who put in a lot of time and effort for children, I think that it's sometimes important to realize that this is all effective on kids. We can talk about teachers and parents, but really what we're supposed to be doing is what's for our children. If our children start a day at 6:30, when they wake up, and end up getting home like at 5:30 from some bus, what quality of education does it give that child, who might have like two hours of homework and everything? So this isn't necessarily what I wanted to comment on, but I feel like I do have a lot of experience with it. And I just want everyone who's here, and appreciative of you listening to me, to keep in mind that we're not doing this for parents or for teachers. We're doing this for kids. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, this was just information. And, and it will come back as more information later. So let's move on to 9A2, the High School Adult Education Fund Budget Amendment. And Pat McHugh will speak to that.
All right, thank you. So at the March 26th meeting, the board considered the proclamation for a budget amendment for adult ed. This is to make some improvements around the property, primarily on the pavement and drainage, and, and road on the side of the building, along with ADA accessibility. So, that proclamation was posted, and now we're asking the board to, to adopt the resolution which is, which is attached on page 33.
Any questions from trustees? Trustee Mercer?
So this is like, sort of like, spending authority or appropriation authority? It's not new money, it's just letting them spend money they have.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none, could I have a high school board motion to reflect the administration recommending trustee's approval of the budget amendment in the amount of $219,000 for the High School Adult Education Fund? So moved by Trustee Witcher and seconded by Trustee Decker. Any trustee comments? Seeing none, any public comments on this item? Seeing none, could we vote, please? All in favor? All trustees present? Thank you. Next is to authorize, ah, a declaration of election by acclamation. Again, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So, state law provides that if the number of candidates for a trustee position is equal to the number of openings in that, for that trustee position, then the board has the authority to declare the position elected by acclamation. And so we have three high school positions that are, that are open, and we have three candidates. The timeline for write-in candidates expired last week. So we notified the elections office that we were canceling the election for the districts A, B, and C. That means that the board can elect those positions by acclamation. We won't seat those positions until May, when we seat the other trustee positions and reorganize the board. But there's a resolution attached to, at page 34, that provides the authorization.
Are there any questions? I guess I have a question, but this, we still have then the Missoula Elementary election. Yeah.
The K-12 two seats, yes.
Okay. Could I have a high school motion to approve this? Moved by Trustee Decker, seconded by Trustee Agaros. Any final comments? Yes?
Congratulations, and thank you for running again.
As long as I don't have to do this part anymore. Okay. Any public comments on this particular item? Seeing none, could we vote to put these positions by acclamation? All in favor? All board members present? Thank you. On the next topic, we're gonna switch to Burley McWilliams to talk about permission to award the Central Kitchen Siding Project.
Yeah, thank you. This is a re-siding over some stucco, existing stucco siding that's been on there since it was built in the late 90s. It's unfortunately become the home of many birds, and is, is in serious need of replacement. So we're looking at replacing with some siding, our metal siding. We gotta refuse, or receive a few quotes, and we're recommending serious construction be awarded the project pending a successful negotiation of a contract. And the amount of $146,000, and $146, $406,000. We'll be using food service funds for this project. During COVID, as many of you remember, we had free breakfast and lunch for all. And we also received a very heavy reimbursement during that time, which, which helped our food service funds. You've all helped us utilize those funds by buying a new dishwasher. We bought a new truck for the food service, and now we're gonna upgrade their siding with those funds.
Do any trustees have questions on this item? Seeing none, could I have an elementary board motion to recommend that we award serious construction with the Central Kitchen Siding Project? Ah, yes. Trustee Witcher, any second? Trustee Mercer, thank you. Any more comments from the board? Any public comment? Seeing none, could the elementary trustees vote on this particular item? All elementary trustees present? Thank you. We're now at item 9B, personnel. And we need to approve the personnel report. Our Executive Director of Human Resources?
Thank you. Pretty standard report. Nothing of note.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion from the elementary side to approve this? Sorry, motion by Trustee Agaros, any second? A second? Trustee Witcher? Any final comments? Any public comments? Any, we'll go ahead and vote on that. Again, elementary board members? All in favor? All present? Can I have a high school motion to approve that particular one? Moved by Trustee Wake, a second? Trustee Agaros? Any comments from trustees? Any public comments? Seeing none, can we vote on that? All in favor? All trustees present? Now we're on to approving Tobacco Use Prevention Grant Application. And Brooke Brennan-Jer from the Health Services Supervisor will introduce this. Thank you.
There is an opportunity for grants through OPI for tobacco prevention. There is an opportunity for grants through OPI for tobacco prevention. We can apply for $10,000 per school or $20,000 per district. The application was conveniently due during spring break, so I did submit it, so I'm retroactively asking for approval for that and acceptance of any funds that are granted. I applied for the maximum amount of, a total of $40,000, $20,000 for each of our districts, that will be utilized for tier one, two, and three interventions for tobacco prevention.
Any questions from trustees? Sorry, I didn't want to cut you off.
No, no, it's fine. I don't know how much info you want.
Could I have a full board motion? Trustee Witcher and seconded by trustee Wake. Any trustee comments?
I just really appreciate that this is focused at elementary and middle school level instead of high school.
High school is included too.
Oh, it is included in there too. But I really appreciate the elementary school focus on it as well, so thank you for this work.
I have a comment. I just would have hoped it wouldn't be necessary, but I presume it is. Yes?
It is. The K-5 will be mainly focused at tier one, information, education, but we unfortunately do have some reason for interventions.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, can we vote to approve retroactively the grant application? All trustees present, approve it. The next topic is to approve policy revisions and new policies for a first reading, and our superintendent Hill will introduce the item.
The moment you have all been waiting for tonight, to review some new policies and some required updates. If you get the MT, MT-SBA updates, they sent out, I think, 39 new policies or revisions. Our legal counsel at Calava Law is recommending to our trustees for our policy handbook, the eight that are listed here, three are new, five are required updates. I'm going to just walk us through them really quickly. They're there for everybody's reading pleasure. But if we start with these, Policy 2165, Early Literacy Targeted Interventions, that one really specified in the law that there could be three options that districts could provide. We are providing two of those, and they are listed out in the, in the policy. One is early literacy, and then the other one is our Jump Start Program in the summertime, so that is early K through rising third graders. We're happy to announce that we've had, or we have at least 150 students signed up to be screened as of today, and about 170 who've expressed interest. You might also notice here in the near future, some banners going up around our schools, advertising. If you go on our website, you will see, our goal is to have nine early literacy classrooms, one for each school, and we're hopeful that if there's the need for more, that we're able to add more. So we're excited to be offering that. But that policy is specific to early literacy, so we have to update that. Policy 2500, this is just changing the term from limited English proficiency to English-language learners. Not a, a huge change. Policy 8132 is reflecting language that we can use other vehicles under the law for activities. So those have to typically be like a Classy, Suburban, Explorer, or Expedition, something along those lines. We can't just grab any old vehicle or van to do that. They have to be qualified under the law for that. So that's reflecting that. Any questions on those three, the new ones? All right. Revised policies. Twelve, Policy 1240 is speaking specifically to duties of individual trustees, and it just clarifies that trustees in class one districts can share the responsibility for visiting each school within a district. So depending on the classification of your district, some districts require trustees to visit every school, but in a district like Missoula, where we have 20, asking 11 trustees to all make it to 20 schools throughout the school year is just a logistical challenge. People have jobs and other responsibilities on top of everything else. So we get to share that responsibility, and we're just clarifying that. The Policy 1420 is really speaking to school board meeting procedures. Everything that's really in there, our district has been doing for years. We're on MCAT, we post all of our board minutes, board meetings to YouTube after the fact. There were other districts that weren't doing that, so this just clarifies again what that looks like. It is recommended that the official recording of the, that the recording of the meeting not be the official meeting minutes. We still have to do minutes, we still have to do the posting, but we are saying that our minutes, the, the written minutes are the official record of the district. So that was the recommendation from our legal counsel. Policy 3110, entrance placement and transfer, just references back to early literacy programs. So not a lot of change there. We went through that earlier this year. Policy 3410, student health. This one is a, a little bit interesting because of the requirements that it has. I'm going to turn to that page. Sixty-one in our packet, and you can see there's a lot of new text in that, but parents will receive written notice of any screening result which indicates a condition that might interfere or tend to interfere with the student's progress. I'm not aware of a situation where we wouldn't be notifying parents, but this specifies written notice of a result indicating that there might be some impairment or interfere with the student's progress. So we could be talking 504, could be talking IEP, something along those lines. On the other side of that, we cannot conduct physical examinations of students without parental consent unless ordered by a court to do so. So that could be a hearing screening, dental, like if we're doing SWISH programs, scoliosis screenings, which I don't think we're doing anymore in our, in our district, but vision, even for traffic ed, you may need, traffic ed may do a vision screening, so now we have to have parental consent. They can opt out. I know, I'm aware of districts that host physical nights. I don't know if MCPS does, but they'll usually bring providers on campus, try and do it in a larger kind of setting, making it more convenient for parents and things like that. So something like that would have to be noticed. Parents would have to give consent. But the requirements from Montana High School Association to have a physical to participate still exists. So even if we're not offering it, it really has very little impact on, on activity. So just wanted to draw our attention to that one more specifically. And then Policy 8110, and again, this is just reflecting language that we can use other vehicles for busing students. An example would be, we might use an expedition to transport a student who is identified as homeless under McKinney-Vento, and so we have the ability to, rather than sending a full, full-length passenger bus, we could send smaller vehicles and be more selective in how we do that. I was out for time.
Very good. Do we have questions, questions from the board? Trustee, trustee, not Avgeras, Mercer?
On the 1421, the one about board stuff, so it's cutting the consent agenda and cutting electronic participation? Can you speak more to those?
On 1420? I, I think it was, I think it got rewritten back into the rewrite on this. Wish he's had line numbers on them.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the top of page 55, which seems to just whack the whole consent agenda thing, which I don't actually think saves us that much time. But then, the bottom of 56, there was language about allowing electronic participation that all now seems to just be gone, which I don't know if I have an opinion about it or not, but just, it seems notable.
Yeah, I think what, what I would reference is the component about the meeting conduct and order of business, that the general rule is a parliamentary procedure, which would include consent agenda and those kind of things, are applicable in the policy for every board meeting. They can be used as a guide, they don't have to be like, de facto, but if the board chair is, is running the meeting and using that as a procedure, that would stand to reason that that's where those types of things lie, and they don't have to be listed out specifically. But I can get more clarification on that for the next go-around from...
I guess this is in particular, and we haven't taken it, used it that much, but there have been times when we really needed a quorum or something, we've used electronic, and so I would want to know if this was eliminating that?
It, no, it is not eliminating that. In fact, the law stipulates that you can allow for electronic to happen, but you have to be present at the meeting. You can't, you have to either be on the phone or on a device, engaged in the meeting. You can't just call in at one point, say, oh, I'm here to vote on this. It requires your presence, either physically or electronically.
Yeah, I had the same question, because I saw that marked out, and I thought maybe it was just because it's so accepted now, that, that it didn't seem like we needed to, to say it. I had another question about student health, one? If there's a situation, which I hope never happens, but a situation where a student begins to act out in some way, and the concern is that the student may have taken some sort of stimulating substance?
Yep.
Is there an option to then look at that?
Yeah, it says unless the health or safety of the student or others is in question. So if, if we know we're going to screen everybody for hearing, we're going to notice that to parents. Parents can opt out if they want to. But if you are suspecting, you know, under basically, if you're questioning about the kid's physical health as a result of maybe impairment, intoxication, under the influence of something, we do still have the ability to intervene.
Okay. Any other questions on these items? Seeing none, could I have a full board motion to approve the policy revisions and new policies for the first reading? Yes, that's your motion. Moved by trustee Witcher and seconded by trustee Avgeras. Do we have any final comments from the board? Any public comments? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor of approving the first reading, please raise your hands. unanimous to all present. The last item on this agenda is to approve the Montana High Set Option School District Application, and Barbara Frank, is she here? Ah, there you are.
Hello again. This application is for the High Set at Willard. So last time you approved our AA comprehensive high schools, high set applications, which required us to change the amount of seats at Willard. So this is the new application. But I also wanted to answer the question that was asked of me last time around Sealy Lake. And so I talked with Sean Holmes, the principal, and he told me that, in fact, that is not a program that they have accessed at Sealy in his time as principal or previous to that. However, he said that if they were in need of that, they would work with Willard to access the High Set Options Program at Willard. He also told me that because of their size, they're able to use our credit recovery programs and systems to catch kiddos up and get them back on track for graduation. So he said it's just a little bit different at his building, and if he did need to access that program, he would partner with Willard and use one of their seats.
Are there any questions from the board on this item? Go ahead.
I appreciate that. I, I appreciate the legwork and a thorough answer, and I would just encourage, you know, Mr. Holmes to reach out and, you know, if any case like that arises. So thank you so much for following up on that.
Could I have a high school motion then to approve the High Set Options at Willard? So moved by Ann Wake and seconded by Jeff Avgeras. Any final comments from board members? I have a comment that's a little off this topic. I just wanted to say that Barbara Frank gave a stupendous presentation at the Early Education Summit on campus, and I appreciated that. Any public comments on this High Set item? Seeing none, could we vote on approving Willard's? I don't get, yes, I do. All present have done so. So we can adjourn, and the time is 8:04. Thank you, guys.